For the fifteenth, 2015 meeting of the Glendale.
The microphones.
Good evening. Welcome to the December fifteenth, 2015 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Council members Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Sinanian. Mayor Najarian.
Here. Councilmember Devine, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Please, please stand. Repeat after, "We're with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Please remain standing for this evening's invitation, which shall be delivered by Rabbi Rick Schecter of Temple Sinai of Glendale.
Thank you, Arti. Honorable mayor, distinguished council members, and fellow citizens, let us pray. Dear God, source of life, we pray for the well-being of our Glendale community, our city council, and people throughout the world. May your blessings rest upon the members of our city council. Grant them a vision for our city that is both wise and kind. Guide them in their positions of leadership and responsibility so that our community may be an example of justice and compassion in the world. Deepen our love for our Glendale community and our desire to serve it. Strengthen our power of self-sacrifice for our city's welfare and teach us to uphold its good name by our own right conduct. At this time of increased fear, violence, and threats of violence here in California and throughout the world, may we each do our part to help build a kind and a just society in which we want to live. May we overcome and transform hatred and violence, intolerance and xenophobia with the greater power of wisdom and courage, justice and compassion, and human respect and dignity. May this sacred holiday season imbue each of us with a renewed sense of family, community, friendship toward our neighbors, and love and concern for our fellow man, woman, and child. Dear God, may we walk in the light of your presence and use all of our powers for goodness and blessing. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi. May we have your report?
Agenda for the December fifteenth, 2015 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, December eleventh, 2015, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Our next item, please.
Next item is presentation and appointments. At three A is the agenda preview. And to save Miss Spears some time, I will just make an announcement that this is the last meeting of the year 2015. There will be no meetings on December twenty-second, twenty-nine of 2015, or January fifth, 2016. We will be returning January twelfth, 2016, chambers. Three B is student presentation by Global Initiative Alliance regarding initiative for water conservation strategy.
Good evening, everyone. We really appreciate that you managed to take some time for us today, and we'd like to say thank you for having us here. My name is Dorothy, and I'm the president of a youth social advocacy group called Global Initiatives Alliance. We're a group of passionate middle and high school students who are working through and act social change within our communities. Before I begin, I'd like to thank the council members as well as the mayor for having us here today and continuing to support us throughout our efforts. While I myself have not had the pleasure of working with you all yet, I've heard many wonderful things from my seniors. So here, our presentation, we are here as representatives of our social advocacy group to talk about a specific kind of water conservation project they're working, water conservation project they're working with and asking for your support so that we're able to have this kind of tournament set up. As you can see here on this slide, California's drought is not a real surprise. It has been getting a lot worse. However, thanks to the efforts of the council members here, we have been able to meet and surpass the 25 percent level reduction rate that Governor Brown had set for us. Thanks to the council members' hard work, we have also been able to reduce the ratio of water usage per resident in our communities.
All right, so many of the other cities have not been as successful, whether it be the misconception that El Nino had the ability of replenishing their water reservations, which they currently are gradually depleting. Though obviously, at this point in time, it is clear that we, that, sorry, it is clear that we must do more than just set annual goals and leave them be. We need change now. And I believe that that change must start with us, the youth. So if you look at this slide, in and around the, along with our friends in and around the LA County, we have partnered with a nonprofit in order to initiate WET, or also known as the Water Education Tournament. Put simply, the Water Education Tournament project is a public safety, sorry, a public safety announcement project tournament that is targeting high school students in and around the five district, school districts, with goals of spreading awareness of water conservation and simply making a visible change.
The PSAs can come in different media forms but must have the requirement of having the main theme of water conservation and must be uploaded onto YouTube with a two-minute time limit. We created a PSA, a mini PSA example for you guys to get a better example of what we're talking about.
Just go next. You want to go forward?
We need a video on there.
Sure.
Yeah, it's that one. Thank you.
I'll take over from here. Ready?
Yes.
And let's adjust the volume.
I think that's basically all of it. So it was a bit rough, but I hope you get the general idea of the PSA we're talking about. And as we go on to, oh, sorry.
That's it. Hold on.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. The PSAs, the top winners of the PSAs will be receiving awards as scholarships, starting from $1,000, $750, $500, $250, and $100, start from first place to fifth place respectfully. We also received various pledges from various different media outlets, water districts, and companies all throughout of Los Angeles County to put up the water conservation PSAs on their media, the media footprints. More recently, Mayor Fury of Torrance has agreed to pledge his support for our project and is now asked, and has now given the challenge to you guys, the Glendale City Council, to help us, the youth, help our communities. Specifically, what we're asking is you can support us by, through various different ways, but one of them is to give us, is to support us by getting the word out about WET PSA to our communities. And two is to volunteer a very generous and very socially responsible council member to be part of the judging panel for the PSAs and/or give us opportunities for internships for the potential winners.
More importantly, sorry, more importantly, we would really appreciate, we would be grateful of your support, given that the city has been a great leader. The city has been, sorry, the city has been a great leader in that, and we would, I'm sorry. Okay. Can I start over?
Yes, yes.
I'm a bit nervous. More importantly, we would be grateful of your support because the city has been a great leader with being socially responsible. And our mayor, Mayor Najarian, has been a strong and great supporter of our efforts, and your expertise would be really appreciated. So thank you for, thank you so much for your time. And if you have any questions, we can answer them now or through the emails that is presented on this PowerPoint slide. And happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Friedman.
I have two questions. First, the movie was fabulous. It was really great. Good job. The cash prizes, do those go to the individuals, or do they go to their schools or their classes?
We're thinking it's more of a scholarship for the individuals. So the person who, they can work in groups, but they would have to divide them up, like, within themselves, and we would just be giving the scholarship to the person who applied for the.
And secondly, have you approached the Metropolitan Water District? Because they have, they have a lot of outreach education programs for young people.
Yes, we actually contacted Metropolitan, the Water District, and they have given us a sponsorship opportunity for us to be financially supported by them.
Good. Glad to hear it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, we can't really make a decision tonight. It's something that we'll have to discuss with staff and bring back as to who we want to select as the judge and how we want to get the school district involved in. Ms. Devine.
Well, first of all, good job. I mean, I'm so proud of all of you for attempting this sort of a project and for everything else that you do with your organization. This is ingenious, and I think it'll be a really successful project. But first, I would like to correct you in you thanking the city council for working so hard at conserving water and meeting our statewide benchmark. Because it's not us that did that, it's actually the residents of our city who worked very hard and are still, are still making a very difficult and tough effort at saving water. So they deserve all the credit for that. I hope that we will find a way to be involved. I'm sure that we will. And good luck with the project.
Great. Thank you very much. You got our applause. Mr. City Manager, how soon did we want to get the chief? ASAP or?
A bit longer, chief. We'll get you an IV.
I can put him before the consent calendar.
Oh, we can do after consent. He'll be all right. He's a tough guy.
Okay. Okay, the next item, please.
Mayor and council, at three C is listed on this agenda as a mayor's commendation for Lisa Glickman, but that presentation was made at the afternoon special meeting. Three D is a mayor's commendation for Battalion Chief Ronald Gillie.
Chief, come forward.
Wow. Mayor Najarian, city council, Scott Ochoa, city staff, and my friends and colleagues. It's hard to believe that standing here before you after having served nearly 36 years in the Glendale Fire Department. All I ever wanted to be was a firefighter, and I have been blessed to live out my dream. And I've lived in a service to the city of Glendale and served under many fire chiefs, council members, mayors, city staff, and those of you before me. Glendale remains one of the safest cities to live in due to the Class A Fire Department and our police department. We have a community that's fully engaged and cares about this city, our safety and its future. The collaboration that takes place in this city was especially evident during the days that I was the emergency services coordinator. And I'm very proud with the development of the Emergency Operations Center. Since 1990, I've been, had the honor of serving during very many of the Emergency Operations Center activations, including the College Hills Fire, LA riots, Northridge earthquake, Glendale mudslides, the San Rafael brush fire. Remember Y-2K? The MetroLink train crash tragedy, station fire, brand fire, and the Chevy Chase Wilson brush fire. Many times during the eighties and the early 2000s. As I sail off in the sunset of another life, I'll always remember my days spent in Glendale. Thank you for honoring my service to this great city today, and it's been a privilege and an honor to serve you. Thank you.
Chief, we have a mayor's commendation to award to you. I don't think we can add much with these few words to your long history and dedication to keeping us all safe, but we tried. And it says, "Congratulations on your retirement after 36 years of outstanding service in the city of Glendale. Your commitment and dedication has made a positive impact on the lives of many residents in the community. We wish you continued success in all of your future endeavors." Thank you. Next item, please.
To Mayor and council, next item, item four on the agenda, is the consent item, including the minutes following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. A member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed.
I'll move the consent calendar. Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Sinanian. Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Thank you. Let's go to the next item.
Item five is city council and staff comments.
Let me lead off with a special adjournment. I would like to lead off the comments by informing everyone that we will be adjourning tonight's meeting in the memory of Randall Randy States. I believe we have a picture of Randy coming up.
Here we do.
Randy States was inducted into the Linemen's Hall of Fame, and he passed away on December ninth, 2015. Randy was the most dedicated person in promoting and fostering the lineman tradition. He taught and mentored over 3,000 young apprentices and linemen on the theories of safe practices and practical applications in the overhead and underground construction of electric facilities. Randy's mentoring was the foundation for several linemen's success in the trade, and he helped those who were promoted to supervisors and managers. Randy States was born in Detroit, Michigan, in 1931. He started his illustrious career at Niagara Power before joining the City of Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. After retiring from DWP, Glendale Water and Power sought Randy's services to develop a cross-training program to merge the overhead and underground groups into one and to develop the apprenticeship program. He created a successful apprentice program for the utilities in Southern California and taught at the LA Trade Technical College. Randy was an inspiration to all those that he touched and nurtured to become real linemen. Randy has become, Randy had become GWP's Yoda, a legend who imparted his knowledge and experience selflessly. Randy is survived by his wife, Betty, daughter Donna, sons Gary and Chad, six grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. He also had one son, Kent, who passed away at a young age. Randy will be missed and remembered as a great person, family man, mentor, and one of the most dedicated linemen in the industry. Randy States. And let me go to my colleagues for any other comments.
Just a short comment to make up for last, our last meeting lasting until 11:45. I want to nominate, renominate, or reappoint Art Devine to the Civil Service Commission. He is my appointee, and his term is up, and I want to place him being reappointed on the next agenda.
Okay. Be on the agenda. Ms. Devine.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thought you were going to call Mr. Garpetian. Sorry. Just two events that I went to this past week amongst a lot that stand out. First was at the Adams Square Mini Park, where they had the viewing of a true community project called Our Starry Night. And the reason it's a true community project is because there are 600 stars, this is in the service station, that were painted by the students at John Muir Elementary School. And there are 36 cardboard houses which depict Adams Hill Homes. And it is a wonderful art installation that I encourage everyone to go and take a look at, especially at night when it's all lit up. It's beautiful. And I congratulate the Adams Hill Neighborhood Association for bringing that project to fruition. And the second event that I went to was this morning, and it was the retirement of Leon Mayer. We all know Leon from the Friends of the Library, and he would come to city council every week with announcements of authors and speakers at the library. He's 89, wanted to continue until he was 90, and that's not until March, but because of the construction, he's cutting it, cutting it short. So he is one of the truly dedicated volunteers in our community, who cares, really cares about Glendale and the arts and the library. So I just wanted to say, Leon, that we'll miss you coming to city council if you're watching. I know that you will, you will be missed by many. So happy retirement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I asked for this item to be put on the agenda, but a couple of weeks ago, and I'm asking again, for a joint meeting between the city and the school district, not just to talk about the opportunity of doing joint projects, creating more park space or soccer fields or new parks, but also to talk about the safety of our schools and our students. Due to the events a couple of weeks ago in San Ranino and today in LAUSD, I think this is very important to have that, that joint meeting and have a collaboration between the city, school district, as well as our police department. I know many cities are doing it. I would like to put that on the agenda, early, early January if possible, and have that meeting and sooner than later. I think it's very important to have that.
Okay. Had we already put that on the to-do list?
It is on the council follow-up list. It's just a function of ten schedules. So keep, yeah, we will get a date sooner than not. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just want to, I just want to extend an apology in arrears and in advance on behalf of all of us on the city council who may have not been able to attend your groups, your neighborhoods, your employees' associations, your business leagues, your charities, your retirements, holiday parties. It has been a tremendously active holiday season. I have tried my very best, as well as all of my colleagues, and I know that we have missed some of the events just due to the sheer number of them. I, I've counted my agenda for Thursday. I have seven events to go to, which is an incredible number. We all try to get to as many as we can. Please do not interpret our absence from your particular event that I know you've put your heart and soul into as any sort of slight or disrespect. We try to go to as many as we can. We're just, we're just human and can only get to so many. So, and that being said, we do wish you a very happy holiday season. This is, which night of Hanukkah is this?
The, the, we have to wait till next year now for nights of Hanukkah.
Well, I hope all those who celebrated Hanukkah had a great season. Christmas is coming, New Year's, Armenian Christmas, Kwanzaa. So let's be safe and watch out while we drive and not do anything that we would regret. I'm kind of looking at you, chief, because sometimes we do things that we regret. We're met by your, your great department. So let me terminate my remarks, plead the Fifth Amendment, and I will go to the chief. Let's have it read into the record. So we're going to skip down, Mr. Clerk, to which would be item eight B.
Mr. Mayor and council, item eight B is chief of police, crime trends in Glendale for the first nine months of 2015. B1 is a motion to receive and file the report.
I do, we'll get to that. I do have a community event, but we want to get the chief going, so Cindy Slaughter. We'll be right back to you after the chief.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, what we have before you tonight is an update of some of the crime trends that we're seeing in Glendale during this past year. Many cities have been releasing this type of information, and the trend in our region, unfortunately, Glendale is not immune to, and that is we are seeing some increases in crime. in crime, specifically in the areas of thefts and some of the assaults and drug arrests. Some of these reasons are recent changes. In 2011, AB 109 occurred, which transferred prisoners from the state prison to local county jails. That has increased our populations. And then in November of 2014, we had Proposition 47, which further exasperated some of the challenges in law enforcement. All drug possession charges went from being a felony to a misdemeanor, and grand theft went from $450 to $950 as the amount. We also lost the ability to charge someone who has been arrested and convicted of petty theft and continues to commit petty theft, in particular shoplifting, with a felony. They're now just misdemeanor crimes. So that's some of the challenges. So as I go through this presentation, it's going to sound a little alarming, but I guarantee you at the end, there's some good news and there's light at the end of the tunnel. So the first slide here shows actually 12 years, and we were seeing some declines in crime like many other cities. We were seeing crime across this nation actually declining, and Glendale was experiencing those same type of trends. For the first nine months of 2015, compared back to 2014, you can see that we are having some increases in, again, particularly auto theft, grand theft, and petty theft. The blue line shows where 2015 crimes have been, while the red one shows where we were last year for the same time period, and you can see that there has definitely been somewhat of an increase. The one thing that would show a little alarming would be the second category of rape. They did reclassify what constitute the crime of rape. It expanded it tremendously, so that's why those numbers have gone up dramatically. It's not that there's a huge increase particularly in rapes, it's just that now what is classified as a rape encompasses a lot of other crimes that used to be kind of standalone crimes and weren't captured into that. So you'll see most cities saw significant increases, but it's just due to the reclassification purpose. Again, when we look at shoplifts, you can see they're trending up. The brown line there in November of 14, that's Proposition 47. And you can see since then, shoplifts are definitely on the rise because now we cannot charge them with felonies, even if they have prior convictions for petty theft. And we're seeing that individuals now were released on a citation, so there is no -- there's not a great deterrent for them to remain. So we are seeing an increase in the shoplifts. This, again, goes into a little bit further detail, shows what our shoplifts are and all other thefts, and they are definitely on the increase. This is one of those alarming ones, it's showing our narcotics cases and vice cases have gone up tremendously for this past year. We're all, you know, on trend, almost a double what we did last year, and again, that's because of that reclassification. We're seeing more and more individuals in possession of narcotics because there really isn't a big deterrent. They're going to be charged with a misdemeanor, they're going to be released on a citation to appear in court later. There has not been put in place a solid system to divert these narcotic users to rehabilitation. That was something that was supposed to happen. We are not seeing it yet. And in fact, private companies that were doing drug treatment are actually going under because they're not getting customers, they're not getting referrals from the court, and so the individuals aren't seeking that treatment. This is something that needs to be fixed because this was not the intent, just to allow these people to continue to commit crimes and fuel their addictions without getting some sort of treatment. It's also well documented that narcotic users also many times are committing thefts, shoplifts, things of that nature to support their drug habit. So there's a direct correlation there. Assaults also on the increase, not just domestic violence, but also non-domestic violence. The one trend we see in Glendale is that a lot of our assaults, we're getting more assaults upon our officers by suspects resisting our officers in the field, and a lot of the assaults are known parties, so it's not someone being assaulted by a stranger on the street. They're known parties that, for some reason, get into some sort of a conflict and an assault occurs, and we're seeing those assaults. Again, that could be attributed to the increase in drugs that we're seeing. We're also seeing some of the assaults are a result of people that have mental health issues. And as we get into the new year, we will be having a mental health clinician embedded in the police department that will work with our officers every day to provide a new and first-time in Glendale level of mental health and referrals for those type of individuals. Another area we're seeing increases are is in the area of frauds and identity thefts. A lot of it is because more and more people continue to use online shopping. It does create an avenue for additional identity theft. We actively work these cases and go after these groups. What we have found is we have been very successful in arresting some of these groups, and some of them actually are coming from the East Coast. They will stay in our community or in some of the hotels, and they commit these type of crimes, identity thefts and frauds. And when we talk to some of them, why they would come all the way from the East Coast to commit these kind of crimes in California, sometimes the answer is because our laws are now allowing for less accountability than that what they would get in other states. So it's a trend that we're going to continue to see until we can find a way to put some teeth back into some of these habitual offenders. Our officers have been very, very aggressive. Our arrests are up tremendously. You can see the blue, that's the felony arrest. Those are down, and that's attributable, again, to that exact reclassification of those felony crimes to misdemeanors. But you can see the officers are out there making arrests, they're taking people off the streets when we catch these people committing crimes. Our officers are tremendously good at what they do. We have been able to, like I said, catch rings of organizations coming out into our community to commit crimes, as well as they've prevented some very serious crimes from being committed because they've been able to prevent those crimes due to very proactive police work. Well, here's some of the good news. When we look at our neighbors of Burbank, Pasadena, and Los Angeles, per thousand residents, the number of crimes, we are the lowest. So 13.77 is per thousand Glendale residents, and everybody else is 20, 22, and 22.17. So basically, what that means is you're almost half as likely to be the victim of a crime in Glendale than you wouldn't be in our neighboring cities. Also, if you look at the bottom, we're the leanest. We run with 1.23 officers per thousand residents. City of L.A. is double that. And so what we are finding is our officers are very efficient and effective in what they're doing, and you're running an organization that is lean, but has been productive and has been able to combat a lot of these crimes. Last year, in 2014, Glendale was ranked as the fifth safest city in California and the 12th in the nation for cities with over 100,000 residents. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, you have always and consistently been supportive, providing resources to the Glendale Police Department for whatever we need to keep this community safe. We appreciate that, and those efforts are paying off. Even in these challenging times, we are still being very efficient and effective in our crime-fighting techniques here. At this time, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have on some of the information I've just shared with you.
Chief, as a general question, I just want to put this out, and then I'll go to my colleagues. What else can we do as a council to help your efforts, and what else can we do as a community to help these efforts?
I think first of all, starting with the community, is even as we talk about terrorism and things, the whole concept of see something, say something, is something that applies not only to those type of terrorist activities, but also with criminal activities. A lot of the times, we've been successful in preventing a serious crime, it's because residents call when they see something that allows us to send our resources to that neighborhood. We've been successful in arresting these teams of burglars who come in and have worked up in our northern neighborhoods. We've been successful in preventing individuals that meant to, you know, do harm to someone because they felt they were wronged, and they were armed, and were able to prevent any type of crime from that suspect. So as a community, I think it's staying close to the police department, paying attention to what we put on our website in terms of the trends. We monthly put out our police statistics that show what's happening, as well as where it's happening. So you can look at those monthly reports, determine where you live in the community, and kind of see what's going on in your neighborhood, and then respond to us when you see something that doesn't look right. As a council, I think what you're doing for us is exactly what we need, is just continuing to support us, continuing to show that we have your confidence to make sure that we have the resources that we need, that are within the reasonable parameters of our budget. And so I think that that's one thing, as I've had conversations with you in the past, all of you have said the same thing, is that you are willing to help us in any way that we need it. And at this time, all I can ask is just for your continued support. And when you see our officers and our employees, it's just to thank them for the job that they're doing because they are working very hard with a lean crew and some very challenging times in this very recent future and in the past.
Thank you, Chief. Let me start from my left and my right. Do you have any comments?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure you do, Ms. Devine.
Thank you.
I know you're very interested in
I am, I am, I am. I just want to say to the chief that no one disputes the fact that we have a great police department. I know that we do, and I know our residents appreciate all of you and what you do. Do you suppose that because you're making all of these arrests, that these criminals know not to come to Glendale? I would think that would be a
Yeah, I mean, it does. I mean, and it's a double-edged sword, because the more arrests we make, it also increases our crime rate because we are doing more. So some cities where they're not as proactive as we are in Glendale may sometimes show a lower crime rate, but that just means the crimes, it doesn't say there's an absentee crime, it just means that the crime's not being captured. When you look at our arrests, the reason I put the arrest numbers there is because all those arrests equate into additional crime statistics. So we are being successful out there. Even though we're having some increases in crime, we are capturing many of these individuals that come into our community, particularly from outside of our borders. These aren't necessarily Glendale residents, they're people that are coming here because we are a community that has means, we are a community that is a destination spot for visitors, as well as people that want to live here, but it also creates an attractive environment for those that wish to come here and perhaps commit some crimes.
Are we seeing any of these -- I noticed on the news, there are all of these burglaries or robberies from the front porches when packages are delivered. Are we seeing any of that here in Glendale? And that's, of course, another one, see it, you know, say something, but are we seeing any of that?
We do see some of that. You know, it's a lot of these individuals will follow the delivery trucks, the drivers are think are pretty much aware of it, and when they see something, they'll call us if someone's following them. We probably don't, I wouldn't say we have more than any other city, but it is a very, very common technique, especially at this time of the year, where people will try to follow those vehicles and pick up those crimes of opportunity off of a porch.
So neighbors should be watching out for neighbors. And my last comment is that, being on the police foundation, I know that before AB 109 became law, that this police department was planning strategically on how to deal with this because you, they kind of knew what the trend was going to be. And so I applaud you for all of the work that you've done since then. I know it's a difficult job, but we have a great force, and they're doing the job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Garpetian?
Yes. Thank you, Chief. I have two questions. Our numbers in 2015 are very close to 2010. Is there a trend, is there a reason for that? I mean, what is the, besides AB 109, that, you know, all the felonies were turned into misdemeanor, and they let more criminals out? But most of our numbers, you know, if I compare our numbers to the last five years, we're, 2015 is very close to 2010, and I wanted to know if you see a trend or something.
Well, in 2010, that was a lot of, you know, the cities were going through the Great Recession, so resources were a little less than perhaps we have today. We have been successful in trying to fill many of the voids that we have. We've been able, through the carve-out program, to improve our ability to get employees back to work who are injured as a result of workers' comp injury. So I think back in 2010, agencies were a lot leaner than they are, and they were struggling to kind of make up that new way of finding a way to police with less resources. So I think that's what we're seeing. The projections that we're seeing for 2015 is that we will probably see some additional increases, and as we are able to find ways to get some of these individuals into treatment, as well as, I think, you know, one of the priorities for the California police chiefs is to get Sacramento to try to make some changes to these two initiatives, to give us back some ability to really deter some of these habitual criminals that are coming into our communities. We're seeing these type, I mean, we've had an individual that we'll arrest three times in one week for shoplifting at our retail areas.
And just to close, Mr. Mayor, you were right, there was a light at the end of the tunnel, you know, the last page of the report. I'm very impressed by our numbers, having less resources and the percentage of crimes per thousand people versus even Burbank and Pasadena. I was really surprised, looking at the Pasadena's numbers, how close they are to L.A. And I was, that's very encouraging, you know, to me as a resident and as a father of three children and a family man and what have you. But, you know, I'm glad this is a true light at the end of the tunnel, not the one that George Bush used to say, said, "I saw the light at the end of the tunnel, I entered the tunnel, it was a semi truck coming out." This is a true light, and thank you for your great work, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Friedman?
So I just want to be sure I understand, the increase, the big spike in petty theft, that's because some of the items from grand theft shifted over? So is that, it's a accounting difference rather than an actual crime difference?
We're seeing more, no, we're actually seeing more thefts. We are seeing more thefts because now these individuals know they steal something that's under $900, it's just going to be a misdemeanor, they're going to be released on a citation.
But the legislature says that there's no increase in crime because of Prop 47 or AB 109. Would you agree with that or disagree?
I would encourage them to come out in the street and see what we're seeing and come into our jail, because that is not what we're seeing. And in fact, these individuals tell us, they do these type of thefts now because there is no deterrent. And they know exactly that, you know, in some cities, we're just citing them out in the field. We bring them in, we still do a full booking process on them, but it is frustrating.
I agree with you. I think this is a huge problem, and I think we're seeing the tip of the iceberg with this. There's a perception that burglaries, home burglaries particularly, are out of control, but it seems like they are going, they've gone down by one, but is that, I mean, but if they're a lot, they're a lot. So how many are you seeing kind of per week, per day, of burglaries?
You know, they come and go because what happens is, you know, you get a team that'll come in and work a different city. So like, we captured three individuals from our neighboring city who came here and committed some residential burglaries in one of our canyons. And so you'll see what they'll do, is they'll come into a city and sometimes work it, so they're, it's kind of cyclic. But each time that we make an arrest on a group, it sends a message that this isn't the city to come into. We're very proactive in terms of, we deploy a lot of resources in plane cars and other areas when we start to see a trend. Each week, we're looking at trends for where crimes are occurring, and then deploying those resources to do that.
And are those people doing jail time?
They still will. Residential burglary has not changed, so if we can, if we capture them doing a residential burglary, that is still a felony, they will serve jail time for that.
And I know it seems like we have a couple of different types of crimes. We've got distraction crimes, where they're knocking on people's doors and distracting them, and kind of sneaking in when the people go in the back, you know, the kind of, I'm doing construction, come see your backyard thing. And then I assume we still have people that are breaking windows, breaking doors, that kind of thing?
We have had some of that. A lot of times, they're a crime of opportunity where someone will leave a door open, a car unlocked, or property out in plain view. Or if they're gone, and they don't make proper arrangements for the newspapers to be picked up, and the home looks like it's unattended, those are what we're seeing. It's a lot of crime of opportunity. Sometimes people have alarms, but they don't use them. But a lot of it is too, is, you know, knowing your neighbor, having your neighbors watch out for each other when they see something, they need to call us. And we had one burglary where the person said, "I saw someone sitting in a car in front of my home, but I didn't call you." And then, as they left the home, the home was burglarized.
Now, do we have on our website or any place a page of resources to tell people best practices to how to prevent these kinds of crimes of opportunity? Do we have a little checklist, and also maybe something for people, particularly either seniors or people who have senior family members, maybe they're living alone, to tell them what to watch out for?
We do have resources listed online, and we also work to put out press releases every so often to remind people of what's going on. And we do And we do work with our partners, we do the Tri-Cities, so that we work with Burbank and Pasadena, because what happens here is going to happen real close to those cities also. So we work together to try to get the word out. Recently, we did some stuff on elderly scams that were going on, and we did it as a group, so that we can get the message out to the broadest audience possible.
Right, well, I'll say, having lived in the city of Los Angeles, and having lived in the city of Glendale, not that I'm biased or anything, but there's no comparison in terms of the police services. Not that, you know, we're a different breed, but we just have the resources to be able to do a lot of this proactive work. And people call the police here, when they have the suspicious car, I know that if you can, you do send someone out, and you send people out to, you send officers out whenever there's anything suspicious. So I think that's wonderful, and, you know, I commend the council for always being there to support, making sure you have the resources to do that. And also our officers, because I think that, I think our officers are second to none. Every interaction that I've had, and certainly the vast majority of what we hear from, from our residents, people are extremely pleased with the level of service that they get.
And it's a combination of the sworn officers and the professional staff. I would be remiss in not, those dispatchers that answer those phones quickly and get those resources out there. It's a good balance of a combination of having the right people do the right job.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
I do have a card from Herbert Milano for three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Najarain, members of the City Council. My name is Herbert Milano. Thank you very much, Chief. I have seen throughout the years that I've been coming to the City Council, many reports provided by previous police chiefs. This is probably the best that I've seen, particularly because it includes a lot of the trend lines that I've been advocating for such a long time. That we actually show the trend lines by the different types of crime. I've collected it in the past from the Bureau of Justice Statistics, and we saw a significant reduction in crime from 1995 through 2005, and then it started leveling off. What I would like to suggest with this presentation by the chief is that we have more frequent presentations, perhaps on a monthly basis, so you can narrow down some of the policies, decisions that you could make to augment and support the issues that the police department faces. Let me give you an example of one. There was an increase in simple assaults. Well, we could attribute it to changes in Prop. 47, for example. We could attribute it to AB-109 because of a correlation, but as you know, correlation is not necessarily causation. If, for example, we have a policy of increasing the awareness of domestic violence, and that's a city policy, if I understand it, or at least it was at one time, and it's effective, then we would have a lot more people reporting domestic violence, right? Threats within the home, husband slapping the wife around, that kind of thing. If that's being reported more often, then I think that that particular figure on simple assault needs to be broken down, so that you can define what things are within your power to do, policies that you can create to basically make more people aware of it, which will increase the number of assaults, simple assaults. But it is my contention that we need to break down other things, youth-related crime, commercial versus residential. The, and additional things that you may want to figure out in terms of identifying what those costs really are. For example, what does a burglary, simple burglary, cost the city and its resources of the police department? How many hours of police time? How many hours when they are actually apprehended? What percentage are apprehended? What percentage of them actually get convicted? And so on. So I think that if we, if the City Council were to take one issue, maybe, you know, Part I crimes, one month, or in, three months later, maybe Part II crimes, or break some of these down, it will allow the community to be more aware, and allow you to think about those issues that can be changed with proactive work. Domestic violence generally is one of those things that is after the fact. Police comes in after the crime is committed, but it comes under your purview if there are things that you could do to prevent it. So my suggestion, and what I would like to advocate, is for similar-type reports with more nuance and detail, so that you can tackle policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chief, before we let you go, I just, I just have a couple comments. I'm particularly happy with the restraint, discipline, and sensitivity our officers show in the use of their firearms. We don't hear about Ferguson-type situations, or Chicago, or you name the big city, the Baltimore-type of cases. And we've had challenges to our officers with deranged people with deadly weapons, and they have always kept their cool and done the right thing. So I'm very, I'm very happy about that. And I want you to know that as my travels through the Fifth District take me, that I'm always bragging about our police department, about your command staff and the officers, because you do, as you've indicated, do a great job with a huge, hugely smaller police force than some of our neighbors do. And it's something that I'm proud of. I also brag about the city manager, and the assistant city manager, and my colleagues.
Do tell, my friend, do tell.
But, but I think we're all very fortunate, we're fortunate to have such a police department, because if it weren't for the safety and the sense of safety that you give us, we would be a much different city than we are today. So keep up the good work, and my kudos to your staff. Thank you. Okay. Your excuse, Chief, if you have nothing else on your agenda. Mr. Clerk, I jumped over. Item six, so if you could please read that.
Item six is a community event announcement portion reserved for three-minute announcements about events taking place in our community.
And I do have one card from Cindy Slaughter and Beth Levitin.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. To all of you and all of the Glendale residents, we want to thank you for your ongoing support of getting there as half the fun. That's our 2016 entry in the Pasadena Tournament of Roses. We really appreciate it, and we want to give you, on behalf of the Glendale Rose Float Association, these official parade pins that we have. And I don't want to take up too much time if I should, who we should give them to? Okay, drop. Well, I wanted to mention that we have some exciting events coming up. One of them is this Thursday at the Phoenix Decorating Rose Palace. We are going to be interviewed by KTLA's Gail Anderson in the morning news segment. We also would like to encourage people from the community, Glendaleers, to volunteer to decorate the float. This is a time when we will need everyone's helping hands. So we have volunteer opportunities, we have a volunteer meeting tomorrow at the Pacific Community Center at 7:00 PM. But mainly, you know, if you are 13 or older, if you need student hours, volunteer hours, this is a great way to earn those hours and have fun at the same time. So this Saturday, we need volunteers to decorate the float. And then, from the 26th of December to the 30th, we need all the hands we can get to make this float beautiful for New Year's Day. Our next fundraising event is Bring Back the Float reception on Monday, December 28th, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM at Phoenix Decorating Company in Pasadena. There will be refreshments and a private tour of the floats, including our wonderful float as it is being prepared for its big New Year's Day debut. This is a ticketed event, but you can find out information on our website. So for more information on all our activities, our events, our volunteer opportunities, and the opportunity for you to actually buy a rose, and dedicate that rose to someone that you care about, or to yourself, and have this rose placed on our float, you can go to our website, and that's glendalerosefloat.com. We have our calendar events, we have our December 28th event, and we have our volunteer opportunities, all posted on our website and on our Facebook page. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and good luck.
Is getting there half the fun?
Yes.
It's been great.
Just wondering. We're having a great time.
Thanks.
I don't have any other cards for this portion of oral communication, so I will close this session unless, no, we're good. And let's move on to the next item.
7A Adoption of Ordinances. 7A is ordinance adding Chapter 12.48 to the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to Parkway Landscaping Maintenance and Permit Standards. This was introduced by Councilmember Friedman on December 8th, 2015.
Mr. Carpenter.
I wanted to see if you can add that three-foot landscaping to be away from the trunk of the tree, on the parkway especially, oak trees and protected trees. I don't know if it's possible to add that to it or not, because I think it's, there is no harm on doing that.
Can I make a suggestion? I think that if, I think if, we've all gotten concerns from, I think, from a few residents about some of our indigenous trees, and people watering too close to those trees, and particularly with the oak trees, and it hurting the trees. And I think it's a legitimate concern, and I think if we're going to have that concern, it probably shouldn't just be in the parkway, but in, you know, kind of in our indigenous tree ordinance, covering all indigenous trees, even though we're not going to be able to obviously always enforce it, but it's good to have that standard there, so that residents, when they look at the indigenous tree ordinance, understand what's healthy and what's not. Not every tree doesn't like watering, and not every tree can't take planting close to it, but it's primarily oak trees where it can cause a lot of harm. So if, with your, if my, if the rest of the council agrees, what I'd like is to have staff go back and look at best practices for our protected trees, and to add something to the indigenous tree ordinance that we can review, so that it's not just--
Regardless, regardless of their location.
Right.
Whether it's in the parkways or on private--
But what happens to this ordinance today? Are we going to pass this ordinance with the--
This one, I think we do, because--
With the amendment, and then go back and look at our ordinance?
No amendment, because the indigenous tree ordinance would supersede any of the parkway standards.
I would, you know, go along that lines to say that, to the extent we want to vest the protection of the trees in one location, so they're not competing in any which way in the code, and it's not confusing, the indigenous tree ordinance would supersede and have precedence when it comes to the protection of trees. What I have heard from individual council members, yourself included, sir, in terms of the response that we've gotten from members of the public, is bring back the indigenous tree ordinance, because we do want to look at additional restrictions that could be applied, that would protect those trees even further. That would be somewhat separate and apart from this parkway ordinance, because those protections would exist above and beyond whatever happens in the parkway. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We used to have a pretty strong indigenous tree ordinance--
And then, and that's true, and so we want to make sure--
That got some of us in a little hot water.
We would, we would bring that back to you, Mr. Mayor and Council, so that you and the community knows, eyes wide open, exactly what we're doing, because, if you recall, the infamous mirror incident on the trees, and how, and then the trimming of the trees, and the enormous fine that that generated, maybe discretion is a better part of valor, and we can use some common sense and practical application in the execution.
I presume you heard about that out in Monrovia at the--
Oh, oh, yeah.
John and Ken, John and Ken.
We heard about that.
Ms. Devine.
Well, I just wanted to say that I brought this up last week when we were talking about this, this resolution, so I'm all, all for this particular change. I would like to see it come back on January the 12th, if possible. Amendment?
January--
Or the next, perhaps, the next--
In January, yes.
All right, okay, good, the change, good. Thank you.
With that, I'll introduce the, I will not introduce all--
Move, move 7A.
Second. You have a speaker?
Oh, I do see. 7A, Catherine Jerka.
Good evening, Mayor Najarain, Mayor Najarain and City Council members. My name is Catherine Jerka, and I live in the Verdugo Woodlands. I'm here to request that you do add specific language to the proposed parkway ordinance that would protect indigenous oak trees in the parkway from watering or planting within three feet of their base. The California Oak Foundation is very clear about this. They're the leading nonprofit for the preservation of native oaks. Under no circumstances should the ground near the base of a native oak be allowed to become moist during warm weather periods. Moisture promotes the rotting of the root, of the root crown and the base of the tree. Planting at the base of an oak tree disturbs their root systems. Plants like grass and ivy are particularly problematic for oaks. Ivy is prohibited in this ordinance for other reasons, grass is not. The Indigenous Trees Ordinance prohibits the installation of irrigation material within three feet of the base of any native tree, but neither it nor the City Street Tree Ordinance prevents watering or planting within that same protected zone. This should be a relatively simple matter to add to the proposed ordinance. I do welcome a review of the Indigenous Trees Ordinance, but I don't see the possibility that maybe all oaks will be protected as a reason not to protect some of our oaks now. These oaks in the parkway face special challenges that aren't always, that private oaks, oaks on private property aren't always subject to, because of the proximity of the sidewalk and the street, which take a toll on their roots. And it's important to remember that when an oak in the parkway dies, the city does not replant an oak tree, it plants something different. So the city street oaks are the only oaks that we get. And unlike trees on private property, which are harder to regulate, both practically and, I think, as you were suggesting, politically, the parkway oaks belong to the city. They belong to everyone, and the city has a special obligation to, to make sure that they protect these resources. The existing ordinances make it impossible to respond proactively to inappropriate watering. A March 1914 email from Mike Garcia explained that to me and Myrna Stanley of the, she's the president of the Verdugo Woodlands Homeowners Association. To prohibit this behavior requires specific language be added. And I want to say that I'm grateful to Rubik Galanian, who's been incredibly responsive to our concerns about these trees. And I have no doubt that they would take what steps they could, he and Dan Hardgrove, who we have also interacted with, to try to save diseased or dying trees. But by that point, it's often too late, and they can't enforce provisions that don't exist to help prevent the trees from reaching a crisis state. I also worry that because we're understaffed, and that this may not be a high priority for staff, that it would be some time before this comes back to council. I and other members of the Glendale Historical Society have been waiting two years for a proposal that was requested by Laura Friedman and Frank Quintero to come back to City Council. And I don't want to wait two years to protect our trees.
Time's up.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Ms. Devine.
Well, would there be a problem with changing this ordinance, in addition, the parkway ordinance, in addition to the indigenous tree ordinance? So we have it in both places?
In terms of language, and is it germane to this particular item, I have to defer to Mr. Garcia. I would not recommend, as a general rule, putting multiple locations within the code that have precedence and legal authority. I don't know that I necessarily disagree with anything Ms. Jerka said, I just don't know that this is the appropriate place for it to be.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would agree with that. Not only do you do all duplicative provisions in the code, but the subject of watering within a certain amount of feet of the tree is not really the subject of this ordinance, this is regarding parkway standards. And so, just out of abundance of caution, I would agree with Mr. Ochoa, it's best to just bring the matter back as soon as possible, so we can just get that, that matter in January to get it, to get it all wrapped up.
Can we bring it back on a date certain, so that we know it's coming back soon? Can we say by January 28?
January 26th, I think, is the last meeting of January?
So by then, if not sooner.
Truly.
Okay, so that would address the concern about it going away. Right. And, I mean, I have--
If that's, presumably, that's the direction of the council.
I have to defer to the city attorney about what kind of ordinance has the most teeth. And I think indigenous tree ordinance does, but this ordinance can point to that ordinance, right? I mean, can we put, put it, can we put it somewhere in this ordinance, so that the public, if they look at this ordinance, sees that for an indigenous tree, for an oak tree, they need to get guidance somewhere else, so that they understand that there's--
We'll look at these co-provisions when we bring back the code amendment, dealing with watering for indigenous trees.
Because that's the only difference that I see.
We'll bring it back. Mr. Garpetian.
Yes, speaking of...
Ms. Jerka, you can have... Jerka, I'm sorry, you can have a seat.
This ordinance is only... Public will look at this ordinance only if they want to remove their landscaping on the parkways and plant something else. Am I correct? Okay. That's... I wanted to make that... put that out there, because not everybody's going to go out there tomorrow and look at their parkways and say, "I want to be three feet away." Speaking of trees, I have one more question. Maybe it's not relevant, but the trees in Verdugo Park, are they part of the protected trees?
Sycamore trees?
There's sycamores, I believe so. Bays, sycamores, and oaks are the three. Is that right, Rubik?
Okay, because I think we need to take a look at them somewhere in a dire need of watering, but I think the rain took care of it. But that's something that I think I wanted to take a look at and also speak up... Okay, that's it, Mr. Mayor. That's all.
Just for clarity, there is a second for bringing it back on the 26th of January, date certain.
Great.
If it's okay with staff.
I mean, I just couldn't do it on the 12th. I mean, we're not going to have...
Yeah, we just want to hear from another council member that we're okay bringing it back on the 26th.
Yes. And I think the public should come back, because there may be questions, there may be differences of opinion about what's in there, so I would recommend that anybody who is concerned, take a look at the staff report ahead of time and come in and give your two cents.
Do we have a motion? Was there a second to that motion?
Yes, sir, there was.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Sinanian. Mayor Njerian.
Yes. Next, we have 7B.
7B is an ordinance amending Section 30.31.010 and 30.31.020 of Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to State Model Water-Efficient Landscape Ordinance, also introduced on December 8, 2015 by Councilmember Friedman.
Is there a motion?
With the item? Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Sinanian. Mayor Njerian.
Yes. Next item.
8A under Action Items, its director... it will be Directors of Public Works regarding parking occupancy study on the 300 block of West Lexington Drive between Columbus Avenue and Central Avenue, and on Central Avenue between West Lexington Drive and California Street. 881 is motion to retain existing parking restrictions on the 300 block of West Lexington Drive between Columbus Avenue and Central Avenue as a two-hour, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday to Saturday, except by permit, and 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. parking restriction on Central Avenue between West Lexington Drive and California Street.
Okay, before we begin, Mr. Garcia, one of the residents in that blocks sent you a correspondence indicating that I should be recused for legal reasons from hearing this item. Did you tell us what you did with regard to that inquiry?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we did receive an inquiry from a resident who had appealed the original TPC decision to the council, in essence alleging that you had a... she didn't refer to it as this, but it's what it is, is a common law conflict of interest that your relationship or friendship, such as this with the business owner of the restaurant on the corner of Central and West Lexington, gave rise to conflict, which required you to recuse yourself. And I did conduct an investigation. I did speak with you. I did speak with the complainant. I spoke with other staff members who involved in this project, and I wrote a report, which is attached to the staff report. In essence, the line for a common law conflict of interest is such that if you have personally embroiled in a particular matter, or you have such a relationship with someone that you cannot act reasonably in a reasonably unbiased or impartial manner, then you may have a conflict of interest that would require you to recuse yourself. And looking at the cases and looking at the facts as I understood them, is my determination that you do not have a common law conflict of interest, and you are not required to recuse yourself in this matter.
Okay, thank you. Should we go to Mr. Golanyan directly, or do you want to tee it up?
We can just do that real quick, as we bring up Mr. Dombrowski, who did the analysis, and he'll be presenting the item to you. As you know, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, this is a rather drawn-out review of permit parking on the 300 block of West Lexington, just west of Central. So we have done a series of reviews. TPC has made a series of adjustments. That's been appealed to the City Council. Additional studies have been done, and further refinement of those studies pursuant to the directions, the specific directions of council, to make sure that we are looking at a variety of different conditions. The staff's assessment, as we go forward, is that the initial adjustments made by the council as it pertains to parking on Central as well as on Lexington have had a significant and positive impact. So with that, I'll have Tad get up and present to you the findings.
Good evening, Mayor Njerian and council members. My name is Tad Dombrowski. I'm the city's parking manager. Tonight, the item before you is an update to the preferential parking on the 300 blocks of Lexington... 300 block of Lexington Drive. Originally, this was established in 1982, so this is not a new parking problem. It has dated back quite a ways. There are approximately 58 spaces on-street between the north and the south side. A quick background, in 2013, the residents petitioned for a change and requested a 24/7 parking restriction, permit only. In March of 2014, the Transportation and Parking Commission approved changing the restriction, but wanted it to be 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., matching the hours' operation for the parking meters in downtown. In late 2014, you heard the appeal of this decision, and the new parking regulations were implemented. In March of this year, you received an update and requested additional changes to the parking meters on Central Avenue. The meters hours... the meter hours were adjusted that month, and the following month, a private parking lot was also completed with 46 additional spaces near the corner of Central and Lexington. Last month, the parking study was also performed while the restaurant was holding a special event. So there was a lot that has happened in the background on this, and this has taken quite a while to get to this point. So during the daytime, this slide shows the parking occupancy during the daytime hours, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. When the study was first performed originally, the daytime occupancy averaged 64%, which is the light blue bar at the very beginning. After the new regulations were implemented, the occupancy remained the same at about 63%. Last month, a one-day snapshot showed that it was approximately 51%. The level of resident parking compared with non-resident parking also showed a change. It began with 35% resident parking, then moved to 48% resident parking, then finally at 52% resident parking. With levels ranging from 51% to 64%, these parking occupancy levels are not a significant concern.
By the way, when you say resident, does that mean only this block? Do you not count if someone from the next block comes?
Correct. And generally speaking, residents on the next block wouldn't get a permit to allow them to park on this block. This next slide shows the parking occupancy during the evening hours, from 6:00 p.m. to midnight. During the first study, the occupancy averaged 84%. With the new regulations in place, it was approximately the same at 85%. Last month, when the restaurant was holding a special event, the occupancy level increased to 91%. While this may seem concerning at first, the level of resident parking versus non-resident parking also shows a significant difference. It began at 33% residence. It then increased to 42% with the new restriction. And finally, it was at 60% residential parking, even with the event being held. This created a much more balanced use of the on-street parking between the residents and the non-resident parking. Lastly, a few highlights. First, we try and encourage residents and businesses to park on-site whenever possible, and that on-street parking is really overflow parking for those needs when you can't do that. With 130 residential units and nearby businesses sharing 58 on-street parking spaces, the parking occupancy will always be higher in the evenings and weekends when residents are returning home and businesses are having an event. For Lexington specifically, the change in this restriction has led to an increase in residents parking on-street. In addition, the changes to the hours of operations for the meters on Central have allowed residents to have more on-street parking available to them than was before. Finally, the additional spaces created in the private parking lot for Phoenisha allowed them to park additional employees and visitors without impacting the residents. This was most evident recently, when during an event, there were still one to nine spaces available on Lexington throughout the evening. Typically, we wouldn't find adding parking spaces as something that we can do for preferential parking. In this case, not only were there some added on Central for the residents, but also some added for a local business. So this was really a win-win as far as a solution to it. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
And could you please state the recommendation of staff with regard to implementing a preferential parking permit zone?
The recommendation of staff would be to keep the remaining restrictions in place from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, two hours, except by permit.
Okay. Comments? Mr. Garpetian.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have a study as to what is the parking situation on blocks... on other blocks like Wilson, California, Salem, Myrtle? Is it the same situation, the parking issues that we have on Lexington? Are they similar situations in neighboring blocks? Or is it only on this block that it's... we have a big issue?
Councilman Garpetian, this is not an uncommon issue. On Fridays and Saturday nights, if you drive throughout the city, you will see a lot of the streets impacted. The idea is, when it exceeds up to 100%, when you see that they're always full, even during the weekdays, you definitely need to step in and make policy decisions that'll fix that. But in a lot of places, we just don't have enough parking on-street to handle all of the demand for it.
I think the question also is, what is the situation on Wilson, California, in the same 300 West blocks?
In the same blocks, there are different restrictions. I think we actually have a slide that show those restrictions here, where you have existing preferential parking on California, on Salem, that are matching what used to be on Lexington. Lexington is the first street that's shown this type of problem, but you obviously see the pattern that with that many streets on that section of east-west streets between Central and Columbus or Pacific, that there are parking problems throughout the area.
So the Salem and California, they have the same parking restrictions, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.?
No, their current restriction is 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, but as businesses will develop on Central, these same problems that are occurring on Lexington will occur down on... next to other... adjacent to other streets.
But the one on Lexington has more restrictive, basically, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Correct.
Says 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Got it? Thank you.
If I may, Councilmember Garpetian, these adjustments to regulations are complaint-driven. If we receive complaints from the residents, then we conduct formal surveys and adjust them as necessary.
Got it. Thank you.
Ms. Devine.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. You said that the residents now... 60% of those cars parked are residents, but the 40% or 42%, they could be guests of the residents, right? So we... they may be actually using more than the 60... or having available more than the 60%.
That is correct. The 60% that we identified had passes in their vehicles, either from the residents themselves or guests of the residents. But just if you pulled in to come visit someone as a resident at 9:00 o'clock at night, you wouldn't need a permit until the following morning, so there could be plenty of vehicles on there that were visiting residents that weren't actually counted.
Right, yeah. So anyway, I want to thank you for doing all this report and having looked at all of this and seeing that, you know, the three changes that were made, the expanded restricted parking hours, the change on Central, and the new parking lot, and I beg to differ with you, but I counted 48 spaces, but you said... So I don't know which one of us is correct, but...
I apologize, there were two disabled spaces I didn't include.
Oh, is that what it was?
That's what it was.
Okay, okay. So with that, I think we... according to the report, in the peak hours, the availability and the utilization of the park in Lexington has gone from 33% to almost 60%, which is almost double.
Almost double.
It's doubled. And as you said, a portion of that may even... of the 42% may be visitors, guests. So based on all of that, and absent from any other statistics that... or study that was done, I think that the parking problem on Lexington has been improved. It's never going to be perfect, I don't think, but I think that what has been done now makes the parking fair, and I think it makes reasonable access for the neighborhood, so I'm going to support this report.
Okay.
Do you have a speaker's card, Mr. Mayor?
I don't have any speaker cards. Any comments? Ms. Friedman?
No, I think that we've worked with the residents and tried to take everybody's, you know, needs into account, and it's difficult. I wish we could snap our fingers and dramatically increase the amount of parking that people have on their property, so the residents weren't having to park on the street. I think that's kind of the root of the problem here. But I do think that changing the time on the meters on the street was a good idea, and maybe down the road, we may have to revisit it, depending on what happens in the area. But for now, I'm glad to hear that that's giving some relief to everybody.
Okay. Is there a motion then at 8A1?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Sinanian. Mayor Njerian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is 8C, Director of Human Resources Regarding Amendments to Memoranda of Understanding with Employee Groups Regarding Unblending Medical Insurance Premium Rates Between Active and Retired City Employees, effective June 1, 2016. C-1, Resolution Amending City GCA Memorandum of Understanding Amendment 1. C-2, Resolution Amending City GPOA Memorandum of Understanding Amendment 1. C-3, Resolution Amending City GMA Memorandum of Understanding Amendment 1. C-4, Resolution Providing Supplementary Benefits and Compensation Executives.
Mr. Cho.
Yes, sir. Sometimes, we are able to do things that make a lot of sense, and especially when they are difficult to do, both for staff to recommend and also for the council to consider. It does take just a little bit of the sting out of that proposed action. As you know, almost ad nauseam now, because we've talked about it so much, GASB-75, General Accounting Standards Board, pronouncement number 75, which will take effect year after next, will require agencies to post on their balance sheet, to book onto their balance sheet, the full value of what we refer to as OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits. This is something that... or the Other Post-Employment Benefits. So something other than the pension liability. And in Glendale's case, that number was well over $200 million. That is the value, the actuarial value of the implied subsidy that is... that existed by virtue of the city, allowing retirees to purchase health insurance on a blended basis, meaning that they were blended alongside active employees and were ultimately subsidized. Though they paid the cost of that medical insurance, there was no direct subsidy from the city, the indirect subsidy, this implied subsidy, basically deflated the true cost of that benefit for the benefit of those retirees. With GASB-75 looming, knowing that the right thing to do, the obligation to the residents, the obligation to our customers and to our existing employees, frankly, was to ensure that we did not crowd out funding for this degree of benefit after folks had left our employ, led us to recommend to you and for you ultimately to approve an unblending of those insurance rates. Again, difficult as that may be, considering the respect with which we hold all of our retirees. So while that was able to happen, as you recall, earlier this year, that still left, and we had the ability to do that pursuant to case law, as Mr. Garcia can illuminate for you, we knew that also under case law, that we had an obligation to meet and confer with our current employees and their associations, their representatives, to effectively get Glendale out of the OPEB business altogether. And so what you see, certainly as negotiated by Mr. Doyle, Mr. Elliott, and Ms. Beers, with the employee associations, first beginning with IBW, and then ultimately GFFA, which occurred... both of those occurred earlier, much earlier this year. What we are recommending to you tonight are amendments to the GMA contract, the GCEA contract, and the GPOA contract that have two different features. One feature is a lump... One feature is a lump sum payment that, again, would get us out of that OPEB business altogether and here on forever, and the value of that is about $1.28 million. Again, trading $1.28 million taken from this past year's surplus, so it isn't impacting our ongoing budget, and trading that for nearly $240 million worth of liability on your balance sheet. A very advantageous deal, but again, something that reflects the needs of the city and the priorities of the council and community over the long term. The other portion of the economics of this arrangement is an ongoing promise to effectively transition from a defined benefit program when it comes to OPEB to a defined contribution style program whereby we would be putting money for these employees into a health savings account, a retiree health savings account, so it is restricted for their benefit, to be used for health insurance purchases once they retire. And so that monumental shift for our existing employee base is valued at a little over $218,000. That is within the amount of money that, the direction that the council gave us, that fits into our ongoing budgets. As you recall, each year, each quarter, we show you the seven-year financial forecast, and these monies are accounted for on a going-forward basis. So again, the takeaway is trading out more, well, more than $200 million worth of actuarial liability that we would have to book in 2017, and the ongoing investment in RHSP that basically transitions us from defined benefit to defined contribution in this arena. So altogether, two very momentous decisions that we are wholeheartedly recommending to you. If you have specific questions about the three different MOUs, certainly Mr. Doyle can answer those for you, but we would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions at this time? I have a card. Why don't we hear from the public? Herbert Milano?
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. My name is Herbert Milano. This particular item that you will find on the CAFER that you're receiving today has been a subject of contention for those individuals who are able to read the CAFER and bring this particular issue.
I'm sorry, Mr. Milano, is this about the CAFER?
No, no, no. It's about this, the post-employment, yeah, the post-employment, that it is found there, and I was just trying to locate the page for you. The issue that we have presented before you is that oftentimes, when a benefit is presented to the city council, oftentimes there are implications that are not necessarily made clear to you by the city staff. The presentations and the documents presented by the city staff to you oftentimes leave out important information. So when the city council, back in 2001 and 2005, decided to reduce the retirement age, where now employees can retire at age 50, you know, with 90 percent of their compensation, it means that the gap between that year in which they retire and the time they would take up, let's say Medicare, you know, could be 15 years, 12 years, 10 years. And that gap, obviously, they would want the taxpayer to fund for them. So not only did they get the benefit of retiring earlier, they basically got bundled with the additional cost that was not necessarily being recognized at the time. And so my suggestion to you is that issues about compensation always include, not just the pay, but also all of the other benefits that are being accrued to them, you know, whenever a discussion of pay is being brought before you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Milano.
Ask you a question?
Yes, Mr. Garpetian.
After the age 50, when they retire, I just want to get a clarification. After we retire, employees retire at age 50 or 55 until the age of 65, who pays for their medical, medical?
They pay for their medical insurance.
Medical insurance.
Up, as a past practice, has nothing to do really with the PERS enhancements that Mr. Milano referenced. As a past practice, what the city had historically done was allow you as a retiree to buy insurance on the city's plan in a blended pool with the active. And so what you heard, the common refrain was, "We've always done this, we've always paid for this." But really, it wasn't until the GASB pronouncement came out that we really recognized that there was a cost associated with the implied subsidy, with the allowing of retirees to buy that insurance. So even though it's a past practice that has occurred, the cost of it wasn't known until we had to start breaking it out pursuant to GASB, had nothing to do with PERS.
Okay. Thank you. And let me just sort of reiterate, I know it's been, it's been mentioned before, but the action that the council is contemplating is not unilateral at this point. This is ratifying a series of negotiations with the different bargaining units, and it's before us for ratification rather than imposition, if you will. So I do, I would like to compliment the bargaining groups for helping us come to grips with this difficult decision. We don't like to take away benefits from our employees, but faced with this almost insurmountable liability, thanks to our GASB, is it a board, is it an association? I don't even know what it is. But they seem to be driving, making more policy decisions in the city of Glendale than the council has been doing lately. We really have no other, no other choice, and I do want to assure members of those associations that they were very properly and zealously represented by their board members in the negotiations with the city. I know Matt and Bob Elliott could attest to that, that this was a truly an arms-length negotiations.
Can I, can we take the, all four of the items at once?
Yeah.
All right, then. Can I move C-1, 2, 3, and 4?
Sir, second.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Mayor Najarian? Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item is H.D., Director of Finance, Regarding Annual Financial Reports for the City of Glendale as of June 30, 2015. 81, Motion Accepting the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. 2, Motion Accepting the Single Audit Report. That's it?
Mr. Ochoa?
It's that special time of year where sing carols and drink cocoa and bring to you the CAFER to close out the year that was 2014, 2015. So with that, we'll have Mr. Elliott do his dance.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a great pleasure to, excuse, fighting the cold, bring you the CAFER this year, and it has a little bit of special significance. And I'd like to thank my staff, and especially Lily Fang, who's sitting back there, who's retiring this week after almost 32 years of service, and instrumental in a lot of the CAFERS that we have produced in the past. What I want to do is, what we typically do is walk you through the CAFER, at least in terms of the description of it, it's 212 pages long, so I won't get into all the gory details, but give you a brief description of what goes into the audit and how we put the CAFER together, talk about the single audit a little bit, and our wonderful topic of GASB. I'll show you the cash balances, we typically cover that, and then I will invite the partner from our audit firm up to address you. So moving to that, just to give a brief overview of what it takes to produce the CAFER and get through the annual audit, there's, in the past, there's been comments about, you know, why can't you have a financial statement done in three months? Well, the problem is, it takes thousands of hours of work from our staff and from the audit staff. So we typically, they come in, the first, first visit that they pay us is towards the end of June, before we even close out the fiscal year. They come in and look at, test the systems, they do external confirmation letters, they send letters out to the banks, anybody that we owed money to, the debt, so they can get third-party confirmation of our liabilities and receivables and so on and so forth. We then go through a series of accruals and close out, do a pre-closing and then a post-closing through the summer and then into October. We come up with a draft report sometime in early October. The auditors then return and complete their fieldwork, which takes quite a bit of time, a number of weeks, that they have their team camped out in our conference room, going through and testing, reviewing, commenting, editing, so on and so forth. It then gets to their hierarchy in the firm, where it goes through their concurring partner review and partner review. We do all the disclosure checklist, we get it prepared for the GFOA award, which this should be the 21st year that we would receive the GFOA award, and make sure that everything's done in accordance to generally accepted accounting principles. With that, we finally get the opinion letter, which is the annual audit report that they give us, and that comes in late, late November this year. We then rush it off to the printers to get it done to bring to you at this point in December. Lot of work throughout that process by accounting staff and with the firm as well. So let me talk a little bit about the CAFER structure. Again, it's a large document, but it's more of a top-down financial report. Starts with the transmittal letter, has organizational profile of the city, it goes into the financial section, has the independent auditors' report and opinion, and then it jumps into what's called the MDA, the Management's Discussion and Analysis. It's like an executive summary, looking at all the highlights, what happened during the year, and has summaries of bond ratings and pertinent financial information. It then goes into the government-wide financial statements, and in kind of a corporate speak, that would be a consolidated financial statement. It's broken down into two categories, business type and governmental, and I'll show you that in a minute. And then it further goes down and looks at major funds, general fund and all the large enterprise operations, typically the larger funds that we have. We still have a fiduciary fund with the successor agency, and then it has about 50 pages of notes that explain a lot of what goes into the numbers. We have, then it goes into the non-major funds, which are the smaller operations, our internal service funds that cover all our benefits, insurance, workers' compensation, so on and so forth. And then it has the statistical section at the back, which has 21 schedules of a lot of information, and I'll go through those different categories. So looking at the entity-wide or government-wide statement, statement in that position, more or less, is a balance sheet, broken down into the two categories, the governmental and business operations. Again, it's a very high level. The end of the year, with a total net position of $1.2 billion, split between the two different categories, and you can see the assets of almost $2.2 billion. And I'll walk you through the impact of what GASB-68 had. We talked about GASB-75, but I'll walk you through what happened with GASB-68. Exhibit A-2 in the, in the report is the statement of activities, basically an income statement, again, broken down by governmental and business operations, and shows you what the total amount of expenditures were, and then the revenues to offset those expenditures that gets you down to, again, the increase or decrease in our net position, where we ended up, again, at $1.2 billion for a net position or fund balance at the end of the As we reported in the first quarter report, the general fund had a end of the year with a 37.8 percent surplus, which is considerably more than the target of 30 percent or the...
Undesignated fund base.
Undesignated fund base. Well, unassigned, yeah, surplus. That equates to about $65 million. As I mentioned earlier, the statistical section has these five different categories, there's 21 different schedules, has information ranging from assessed valuation to the top property taxpayers in the city. In the debt capacity category, it has outstanding debt and calculation of our legal debt margin. The demographic and economic information has our top employers within the city, and then in the operational information has about all the different departments and operations, position counts, number of miles driven with buses, and so on and so forth. Lot of information in those tables. Results of the audit this year, we received, as we would expect, an unmodified opinion, which is what, in audit speak, is the cleanest opinion you can have, meaning we did everything according to generally accepted accounting principles. The other deliverable, in addition to the CAFER, is a single audit report. The auditors produce that to comply with the Office of Management and Budget, that we are complying with all the federal regulations for our federal grants. We received about $46 million this year in federal grants. They're all listed out, and they test those programs to make sure we are in compliance with all the reporting and recording, as it were, of each of those many grants. We had no findings this year. We did last year, but we had no findings this year. I mentioned GASB-68. We've talked a lot about GASB-65. GASB-68, as we have talked about in the past, is what we have to do with our PERS liability, which is approximately $400 million. This new pronouncement, in the past, we were under GASB-27, which we just disclosed, and many speakers have talked about our PERS liability. In the past, we disclosed it in the notes. GASB-68 has come along, we implemented it this year, and we actually had to record the liability at the entity-wide in addition to the enterprise funds. So looking at the impact that that had, we went from roughly $1.6 billion in net position last year. We recorded the net effect of the GASB-68 or the pension liability, which dropped us down to that $1.2 billion. So roughly $400 million is now recorded in the entity-wide as well as the enterprise funds.
That million or...
That is $1.2 billion is our net position citywide. So looking at what the impact was, I just wanted to go through briefly, because it really has an impact at the enterprise funds. We don't book it in, in the governmental funds like the general fund, that's encapsulated at the entity-wide, but it does have an impact on all the enterprise operations, and the largest being the electric fund in GWP. The impact was roughly $40 million. It was this $49 million, less than 12. You can see the difference. We went from a fund balance of $306 million down to $269 million. That's just incorporating that liability this one year in total. Now, next year, as things change, we will alter the liability, whatever that amount is, but it should, give or take, hover around that, I would suspect, in any given year. And each of the other enterprise fund operations, you can see what the impact has been, where it goes down from $107 million here to $99 million, so roughly about $8 million in the water fund, so on and so forth. And again, same thing with the smaller enterprise funds, refuse and fire communication. And if you recall, we had other enterprise funds, like the recreation fund. We have converted those to special revenue funds because of this impact that it would have, it would basically chew up all the fund balance, and this way, we're able to preserve the fund balance with those funds. GASB-75, we have other new GASBs coming along that we have to deal with. GASB-75 is clearly the largest. We've had to operate under GASB-45, which we still are at this point. We disclose what our OPEB liability, it's still $214 million, although the latest valuation that is not under, covered with this CAFER is $240 million. As you recall, the action tonight, and the action you took a couple of months ago in unblending, will drop that liability down to approximately $20 million, give or take, from the $240 million. While that is important, if, had we not done that, we would have gone through the same exercise that we just did with GASB-68, actually booking it down to the enterprise funds as well as the entity-wide level. So this will save a tremendous hit to those funds in the long term. As we showed in the first quarter update, but I wanted to bring it back at least to show you the year-end cash balances where we were at the end of the year. show you the year-end cash balances where we were at the end of the year in the different fund categories. You can see the general fund had 71, or approximately $70 million at the end of June, and electric was about $153 million for a grand total of citywide of about $560 million. With that, I'd like to bring up David Schowalter from Vavernik Trine Day, the engagement partner that has a responsibility of giving us our opinion on the audit. And if you have any questions, please feel free.
Great.
Good evening.
Thank you very much, Mayor Najarian and council members. My name is David Schowalter with VTD, the partner in charge of the audit. So we're presenting you to the results of the 2015 fiscal year audit. That audit covers the period of July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015. You should have copies of the reports that are provided to you. I'll briefly go through the opinion, which is in the CAFR, and I think that's on page one of the CAFR. And I'll briefly go over the opinion with you. So the opinion has headers that are labeled on each of the paragraphs. So basically, what the opinion does is it highlights what we're auditing. The first paragraph outlines the financial statements that we're auditing. And as Bob alluded to, there's lots of financial statements, there's lots of funds and reporting units that are in the financial statements. We audit each one of those independently and provide opinions on the government activities, the business-type activities, each of the major funds, which includes the general fund, includes the electric and the water fund as well. And then we get into our auditor's responsibilities. Basically, what is, you know, what is VTD hired to do? We're hired to audit the financial statements to make sure the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. In addition, when we conduct your audit, we're auditing it, the financial statements and the city in accordance with government auditing standards. So there's an additional set of standards that we have to comply with. And that's typically because the city receives federal grants and other types of grants. There's compliance requirements that the city has to comply with. So we build that into our audit to make sure that the city has met all the compliance requirements for certain types of transactions that could be direct material to the financial statements. In addition, when we conduct your audit, we are looking at internal controls over the financial reporting process. And as Bob alluded to, at the beginning of the year, we're out looking at internal controls over various systems, including revenue, expenses, payroll, treasury functions, looking at those controls to make sure that the controls that are in place are properly designed to detect and correct a material misstatement that might be in your financial statements. So we're looking at those controls early on in the year in order to plan our audit. And then finally, the next paragraph is our opinion, which simply says that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects, which, as Bob had in his presentation, means that's an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. There were no modifications that need to be made to your report, which is, so that's very good. We had an emphasis of matter noted regarding the implementation of GASB 68. So anytime there's a major accounting pronouncement that's adopted that has a significant effect on the financial statements, especially from a comparability perspective, you were to pick up last year's financial statements and this year's financial statements and compare them. Last year, you're not going to see a net pension liability. This year, you are. We're highlighting that in our opinion. That way, the reader knows that, hey, something happened this year with accounting changes. You need to make sure you read the footnote that it references so you get a better understanding of what happened during the year. And Bob already provided you with a good overview of that change. And then the next reports that we have are the single audit report. And in the single audit report, there's two reports. There's one related to the government auditing standards report. As I alluded to earlier, when we conduct your audit, we're conducting it in accordance with government auditing standards as well. That report indicates that there were no material weaknesses in internal controls identified as part of our audit, as well as there was no instance of noncompliance identified. In addition, there's a single audit report, which is an audit of the city's federal grants, the largest being the Section 8 program and other types of programs. We audited those programs based on a dollar threshold, and there were no findings related to those programs and audits as well. And then lastly, we have a required communications letter that we'll also be presenting to the audit committee next month, but primarily just says that the, you know, the results of the audit were that there were no disagreements with management. The audit went smooth. There were no issues that we need to bring to your attention. Again, we're highlighting the fact that GASB 68 was adopted. There are certain disclosures that, when you read through the financial statements, just be aware that those new disclosures certainly provide a lot of context with the net pension liability, provide you what the, what is the pension liability at CalPERS? What are the assets you have on account with CalPERS? And then what is the net pension liability, which is the difference between the two? There's also some sensitivity tables in there that show if the discount rate went down 1% or up 1%, this is what your liability would look like if those, if that scenario occurred. And I know that CalPERS is discussing making changes to the discount rate as well. And just to wrap up, we wrapped up our audit and issued the report on November 30th, 2015, and able to obviously get the report issued on time and to meet your timeline for your council member, council meeting. So definitely want to thank the finance department for all of their effort. They do a great job drafting the CAFR. This is our second year conducting the audit for the city. And obviously, the first year is always that year where we're building our knowledge again of the city and documenting the audit for the first time again. The second-year audit went a lot smoother for everyone, and certainly, it was a help to have that prior year audit under our belt. And then, you know, rolling into this year's audit, everyone just did a really great job making sure that everything got done on a timely basis. And with this implementation of this GASB 68, my discussions with other clients of mine and my colleagues is that this was one of the most difficult standards to implement since GASB 34, which was about, you know, 2002, which had, which basically provided the format of your financial statements that you have right now. So very challenging, difficult accounting standard. There's still the GASB Board, which is a nonprofit board in Connecticut. They're still working through and looking at potentially making even more changes to the standard, just amendments and stuff in the future. So we appreciate the city's desire to want to implement the standard and do it in a diligent manner. They did a great job, and we really appreciate everyone's effort. Any questions?
Questions, Mr. Schowalter. Mr. Carpetian.
I thought you were referring to me as Mr. Schowalter.
No.
You looked at me and said, "Mr. Schowalter."
I know.
Yeah, I'd like to know, how long, how long does it take to conduct this audit? And how many people work on this, on auditing our books?
Sure. I mean, the total hours are roughly around 1,100 hours, 1,200 hours overall for us to conduct your audit. The audit starts around May, so we usually have teams of, you know, three to four people out here for about two weeks, conducting the preliminary review when we're going out and doing internal control testing. Part of that process is to meet with different departments to update our understanding of internal controls. So there's a lot of time and effort that goes into that phase of the audit, which is roughly around 35, 45% of the budget. And then we come back out in July to do the single audit, where we're auditing the federal grants. That's probably about, you know, maybe 120 to 150 hours to do the grant audits. And then the rest of the time, we're spending out here at the final phase of the audit, sometime around the beginning of October, second week of October. And as you can see by the date of the report, all the way to November 30th to get everything done. So at the final phase of the audit, we could have three to four people here onsite, working on the audit, working on different areas of the audit. As you look at the financial statements, there's different balance sheet accounts and income statement items as well, so we divvy that up amongst the team so that, you know, we're more efficient on conducting the audit and getting people to focus on those areas that have experience working on different financial statement line items. And of course, the GASB 68 implementation was something where I spent a lot of time working with the city and my manager, helping them work through the process of implementing. So I had a lot of involvement, just making sure that the standard was implemented in accordance with the accounting pronouncement, so.
Thank you, Mr. ...
It's a very hectic time.
1,100 hours, it must be. Dealing with numbers as well, so.
That's the best.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schowalter. I have a card from Herbert Milano. Three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. My name is Herbert Milano. The CAFR is one of these documents that I find very few council members truly understand, very few members of the public understand. But the people who do understand it are generally the individuals who work for the bond rating agencies. So when GASB comes along and makes a pronouncement for changes, they're aiming for transparency. And obviously, the better the transparency, the better the investors are who are putting their money into bonds that help to sustain the debt of the city. So I would not look lightly into the issue of GASB and what they pronounce, because I think that there are other areas, and people would agree, that are not generally covered in a financial report like this. Mr. Carpet, if you had a building and you needed to borrow money on that building or refinance it, I mean, you do.
Why are you borrowing money? I'm just kidding.
It's very likely that the agencies that want to lend you the money would ask you a question as to, is there any deferred maintenance that you haven't been taking care of? Because it's relevant. If you haven't put money to fix your roofs or fix your air conditioners, right, those are continuing liabilities that may impact your cash flow in the future. But a financial statement like this doesn't really cover some things, for example, like all the deferred maintenance that the city has. You know, it has the incurred liabilities that you have. But if you have hundreds of millions of dollars of deferred costs for, let's say, the infrastructure for water and electricity, you know, how is it recorded? You might consider it during the budget, but your budget sections are basically fairly short, as it was this year. So it is my opinion that the, that the statistical section gives you a beginning way of understanding what's happening. Gives you a way of having a, put your arms around the issues of basic metrics. So I was looking at the CAFR, and we looked at the, for example, the number of potholes in the cities in the statistical section. You know, it's tens of thousands of potholes being repaired every year. That gives you an idea that there's something significantly wrong with regard to infrastructure. Or the number of water main breaks, you know, average, sometimes 10, 20 a year. That tells you a lot about the infrastructure of the water system. These particular statements give you a statement that all your transactions and the controls were in place, and you get a report. But I think that the city council should use the CAFR, in addition to a strategic plan, to look at performance indicators, to make this CAFR more easily understood by you. And hopefully, we create a report that is more easily understood by the public in general. Because oftentimes, it is years later when you begin to understand that the impact of the decisions that you're making today and the decisions that you're not making that you should be making. So my suggestion is that you bring the CAFR, sections of it, on a regular basis and become familiarized, so the public can become familiarized as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Okay, if there are no other questions, this is a motion to accept the CAFR and to accept the single audit report. Motion at 8D.
I make the motion.
There should be one more card for Mr. Weissman.
I think that's, is that oral communications, Mr. Weissman? I saw five minutes on it. I presume that's oral communication. So we're, did you wish to speak on this item as well? Okay. So let's, we can have both at the same time, 8D, one and two?
Yes, sir.
I'll move the items.
Second it.
Second.
On Ms. Devine. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Tananian. Mayor Najarian.
Yes. 8E, please.
8E is Director of Human Resources Regarding Productivity Index and Gain Share Incentives. E1 is Resolution Appropriating $634,726.
Mr. Schowalter.
Yes, sir. Following on the heels of the CAFR, as we had indicated, the CAFR basically is the symbolic and operational closing of the books for the previous fiscal year. And as the council has adopted as a practice over the last couple of years, this notion of gain share. Essentially, if there are tests that are met, that we can demonstrate that our employees have both hit marks on a high strategic level as well as on a operational tactical level, and in fact, if we are running, however slight, a surplus at the conclusion of the fiscal year, i.e. the filing of the CAFR, then we can award up to 1% of base salary, non-PERS able, non-recurring as a function of gain share. So last year, as you recall, was our inaugural move into this realm, effectively a pay-for-performance type of program. We were able to do a full 1% for our employees who have been working tremendously over the last several years in particular. This year, again, we were able to demonstrate, as you heard from Mr. Elliott, a surplus in excess of salary savings vis-à-vis vacancies, operationally and through increased revenues from activity coming through the front door. You hit, as you recall, from your budget adoption process, 82% of the department's strategic goals. Those are basically the outcomes that animate the vision that you have for the community through the different departments. And the 30 key performance indicators out of the several hundred key performance indicators that are tracked each year and reported to you on a quarterly basis when you do your quarterly budget updates, we are demonstrating that we're tracking or that we have tracked along in those, in those key areas, as we agreed upon them at the beginning of the year. So, that being said, the tests warrant the award of gain share for all of your employees, again, 1%. That is taxable, yet not PERS-able, that would be awarded to them. However, given the uncertainty on the horizon, vis-à-vis the challenge to the general fund transfer, the challenge to the utility user tax, the challenge from the state of California by way of the redevelopment loan, and notably as well, the discussions that PERS is having with respect to lowering its discount rate. Given those degrees of uncertainty, we are recommending to you that instead of the 1%, although it is earned, although it is deserved, that we award a half a percent in gain share for all of our employees. I will note as well that the department directors, the management group, have stated that if the council were to award this, that share would go to the employee human relations committee as opposed to going to those department directors. So the information, the motions are there in your staff report. If you have any specific questions, be happy to address those for you.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Are there any cards?
I don't have any cards.
Is this something that is understood by the employee groups? I mean, they explained to me kind of the process to getting to this recommendation.
It is uncanny. I'm, again, very proud of our employees. I was at a retirement for a 35-year employee today, and as I'm walking out of the yard, from paying my respects to this particular gentleman who we are going to miss immensely, the employees are saying, hey, you know, is gain share on the agenda? They know the terminology. They know what it represents. We hit our goals. When you look, in this case, the PMs that the garages do, when you look at the tactical level day-to-day work, so they're getting both an appreciation of what happens at that nap of the earth level and also the 30,000-foot level, they're accepting that alignment as part of what their job is. Even though they may be mechanic, they know that their interests are aligned with the fleet manager and the director of public works, because ultimately, the department heads are evaluated each year by me based on whether or not, mostly based on whether or not they hit their department's strategic goals. So yes, they're very much aware of it. They know, I'm pleased to see how much aware of it. They know what is in it for them. I think if you ask them to a person, they would all say, yes, please, I'd like to, I think we deserve and would love to see the 1%. But again, credit to those folks. They recognize that half a percent is something that is also very generous by way of the council.
I'd just like to comment, Mr. Mayor, that I, you know, they have met all three of the criteria, and I know that they're, they're well-deserved of this gain share. I think we should, we are all thankful that even though we're 25% down in number of staff, our services are remaining to the quality that we have grown to know and appreciate. So I will vote to approve this motion.
Thank you. And I agree, we are, we are down to the lowest level of employees that we've had for 60 And I agree, we are, we are down to the lowest level of employees that we've had for 16, 18 years, something like that. The services that our clients get, that our clients, our residents, our customers get, is maintained. It's not an easy thing to do. Everyone from the frontline desk worker to the mid-manager, to even executive staff is working hard to get more out of our team to keep everyone in the city happy that they're living in Glendale. So I think, I wish I could do a percent, but I think a half a percent at this point is a good indication of our appreciation.
I would just add that our employee groups have been great partners in the last several years and through the recession, and I think that we need to be very mindful of that. And as we go forward, and as we do come out of the recession, and hopefully as things recover, that they become beneficiaries of that as well, and that their hard work is recognized. So I kind of feel that this is the least we can do, and I hope that we can do more in upcoming years, not just in terms of gain share, but in actual salary adjustments, because they have taken some very, they've gone through some very lean years and some very hard years. And, you know, I think at some point, you know, we need to, you know, as we recover, and you know, as we're fiscally able to do so, that we take a look at some of our employee groups.
Okay, is someone making a motion?
I'll move the item.
At 8E1.
8E1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Garpenian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes. Next item.
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited time, is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And the City Manager/Mayor for a matter to the appropriate department for an investigation or report.
Thank you. Bill Weisman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Weisman from far north Glendale. One of the issues that is going to have some significant impact on far north Glendale is the proposed residential development of 221 homes on what is now currently the Verdugo Hills Golf Course property. Councilmembers Najarian and Friedman may remember, way back in 2009, a draft environmental impact report for this particular development was released. And although the development is not in the city of Glendale, it is at the intersection of La Tuna Canyon Road and Tahunga Canyon Road, it is extremely close to the western border of North Glendale, and it will inevitably have significant impacts on traffic and other issues in North Glendale. Back in 2009, the City Council directed Mr. Hagani to respond to the draft EIR, and I have a copy of the city of Glendale's response to that 2009 EIR. And the city made extensive comments regarding a number of issues, but particularly the traffic issue, because this is, in North Glendale, we have two ways of getting to the 210 freeway, Pennsylvania and Lowell. And so those two north-south streets are typically very crowded, especially during peak hours. And in the case of Lowell, which is the closest street to the proposed project, not only is it congested, because it's a way on and off the freeway, but the Shomleian School is located on Lowell, and during the morning drop-off and afternoon pickup times, there is added congestion, because the school is a commuter school, and nearly all of the students arrive and leave there by private automobile. I am here tonight to request that the City Council direct staff to respond to the recirculated EIR. So the original one came out in 2009. A new DEIR is now being recirculated, and it does not include every single topic from the original DEIR, but the traffic portion is being recirculated. And I would urge the Council to direct staff to respond to that. Even though this development is in the city of Los Angeles, it will affect the city of Glendale. And a number of key intersections are listed in the recirculated DEIR. And those intersections, for example, include Lowell and Honolulu, and Pennsylvania and Foothill, among others, that are in the city of Glendale. And there is going to be a meeting tomorrow night held by the Sunland Tahunga Neighborhood Council, a community meeting regarding the Verdugo Hills Golf Course recirculation of the EIR. And that is at 7:00 PM at the Elks Lodge on Commerce. And information will be given out about the recirculated DEIR, and how citizens can respond to it if they wish to do so. And if anyone is interested in more information on this, there are a number of links on the Sunland Tahunga Neighborhood Council website, including links direct to the recirculated DIR, DEIR documentation. That website is stnc.org. You can also go to savethegolfcourse.org for other information. And I have some information that I've brought with me here, including history of the Verdugo Hills Golf Course property. For anyone who's interested in looking at that, please see me after I sit back down from talking. One of the other things I will mention besides traffic is that when the city responded to the original DEIR back in 2009, they noted that this proposed development is going to produce an additional 200,000 gallons of sewage. And sewage, as we all know, flows downhill, in this case, into the city of Glendale. And so there will be significant impacts, mostly in the area of traffic, but in other areas. And because there's only one more council meeting prior to January 19th, which is when comments are due, I wanted to bring this to your attention now. The city does need to respond by January 19th. Thank you for your time.
Mayor?
Have questions if you.
Sure. Let me first see if Mr. Ochoa has seen that.
Yes, it is on the radar of the CDD Department. So they will, it is on the radar of Community Development Department, so they will be providing a response.
My question's actually for Mr. Garcia. I would concur that we should comment on this EIR quickly. Can I request that during oral communications now, since we don't have another meeting quite a while? If another council member seconds it?
What is it that you're asking?
I would like us to take another look at the, I don't know if it's exactly the same EIR that they're recirculating, or if they've amended it at all, but for us to take a look and make, and make comments and express our concerns with the impacts of the project.
You can do that. I would just point out, to elaborate on Mr. Ochoa's point, the staff is looking at it and preparing a draft response.
So they are already? Okay, good. And just, you know, as an aside, there's another project proposed. What?
I'm saying, faster, faster. Get them going.
There's another project that's proposed, which is a little further away, but I think also very impactful, which is on Oro Vista and Tahunga, right up against or even in the Angeles National Forest, which is another several hundred unit, single-family project in what was really, you know, an open space, sort of pristine open space in a very ecologically sensitive area that I think should be of great concern as well. Now, it's a little bit further away, but you could argue that it also has impacts because it involves the water that goes down the canyon and eventually into Hanson Dam. It involves the gateway into the Angeles Forest, so I would love to see us comment on that as well, if there's a proposed project yet and an EIR yet. Comment?
Mr. Garpenian? I have a question from Mr. Weisman. I thought this, this issue of the Verdugo Hills Golf Course has gone away, so it's back again, the ER is being circulated, and 220 homes, you said?
I believe it's 221 in the current, there are several alternate proposals that are listed.
Is that very famous or infamous Canyon Hill projects?
The Canyon Hills project is up, less than a mile to the west on La Tuna Canyon Road. And the developer for that project has received all, has had his entitlements for a number of years. But my understanding is he's having trouble getting that development hooked up into the existing sewer system. It's, the sewage in the area is a matter of geography, because La Tuna Canyon Road goes uphill from the golf course, and then go peaks, and then starts going downhill. So there are sewers coming up both sides of La Tuna Canyon Road. The sewer on the east side flows into Glendale. The sewer on the west side flows down La Tuna Canyon. Now, the effluent from those sewers all ends up in the same place, which is the joint Glendale-City of L.A. treatment plant down near the San Fernando Road area.
Was there an EIR for that project?
There was, and the comment period has expired, long past, but my understanding is the developer has run into some difficulties, possibly with the financing as well. Again, it's going to be an issue, because there will be a cumulative impact primarily on traffic on La Tuna Canyon Road.
Is it the same developer, Canyon Hills and Verdugo Hills?
No. And I, if you come by and see me when the meeting is over, I have a, one sheet of history of the golf course that explains the development history.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
I just wondered, if I may, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Molanian, and this probably will be in the staff report, is this 200,000 gallons an issue, a big issue for us?
Well, if I may, that's a substantive question that I would hesitate to put Mr. Molan on the spot to get into in detail, so perhaps it can be addressed as part of the report.
Okay, thank you.
Herbert Molano?
Thank you, Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council. My name is Herbert Molano. About three weeks ago, I came here to do a follow-up on my request that the city take a good look at the needs for the repair of the road infrastructure in Glendale particularly. I was trying to address the needs of the gateway area, which is between Brand and Glendale Avenue, Broadway and the freeway, 134. I brought to you my issues concerning my observation of what I have seen throughout the years, as the lack of proper maintenance of these roads, or the lack of funding to Public Works in order to repair a sufficient number of roads to not only keep your budget down in the future, but also to maintain a better quality of life. You know, if we were to create a brand-new city someplace and define what we needed to create, we would look for the water needs of the community, we would look for the safety needs, and we would look for the transportation needs in the roads that need to be maintained for that community. It's one of those basic things that absolutely everybody uses. Glendale has 350 miles of roads, and according to the standards that I've read about road maintenance from other cities in California where they stayed, it's roughly from 20 to 24 years maximum as the life of a roadway. And you can see the deterioration. You can look at, for example, Brian Boulevard, which was repaired, what, in 2009 or so? Maybe a little bit earlier. And you look at the conditions of Brian Boulevard today, just, you know, just 10 years later. So if the roads are not maintained, they eventually began to not just perform poorly on the automobiles and everything else, it's just blight. It just looks awful. If you had any property nearby, I'm sure that the property values would be lower because of the quality of those roads. Or alternatively, whenever you drive now, the freeways that have been revamped, you know, the feeling that you get that the freeway, like the 5 freeway, that is clean and good roads and so forth, it just makes a different quality of life for us. So the presentation in the reply of the City Manager was, well, you know, we're better than average, or better than LA. And I don't want to deal too much into that, because I don't want to necessarily come in and contradict with data. But if we have to wait for other cities to get better before we take care of our own, then when will we? Because we can always find a city that has it worse, whether it's Burbank, or, you know, Pasadena, or some other city that we're going to compare ourselves with. When then are we going to put enough money in the budget to fix these roads? I sent all of you pictures that I took, just a few, of some of the roads where this is crumbling. Generally, a pristine road has no blemishes on it, no cracks. Then you have a next level of deficiency, when you find like one crack where you could put your palm, the edge of your palm in it. Then you find a further one where you have multiple cracks like this, and then the worst ones are where you have like a pattern that looks like the skin of an alligator. You know, it's all cracked up and so forth. And there are so many like that, that it needs addressing, and it needs a proper budget. But there's a number here on page 207 and 206 concerning street reconstruction. Let me give you the numbers. These are potholes that were repaired, not declared, but, or found, but 16,449 in 2010, 11,800 in 2009, 16,683 potholes repaired the year before that. And I can take a look at 21,000, oh my God, in 2011, 21,900 in 2012. You cannot say that we have that many potholes in this period of time, period of 10 years, who knows? 100,000 potholes repaired in the last five years or so, and barely any reconstruction year after year. So you have on the CAFER, that's what I'm looking at, page 204. So the statistical section of the CAFER gives you a handle of the performance, where the money is going or is not going. So it is my strong suggestion that we begin to look at the statistical section as a way of really getting a value, an assessment of where we are with regard to the basic quality of life needs of the city. The other one, for example, is Parkland, which is another issue that is coming before you, with the parking pack fees, the areas that are significantly deficient, where we can have the data that allows you to make good decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don Margolin?
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, this year went by very quickly, but I'm back. And I am happy living in Glendale. I've lived in Glendale off and on since 1970, and I've owned a home in Verdugo Woodlands since 2003. I received a letter from the, which I gave everybody a copy of, Community Development Department, that they're raising the news racks this year to $121. We have been, for the last few years, at $52 each. $52 at approximately 240 news racks equals about $12,400 a year, meaning to monitor the news racks, we had, the city had about $1,000 a month. At the $121 a news rack, it would be $29,000 a year. I'm asking that the price not be raised to $121, because I don't think it's fair, and I don't think it's in a good conscience to raise that much money. On page two of the handout, I show the cities, like Burbank's $20 a year, South Pasadena's 25, Pasadena's 1142, LA is 2169. Beverly Hills doesn't even charge the LA Weekly, which I represent LA Weekly and Pasadena Weekly. It's on the books, but they don't send a bill, which is kind of strange. I would like to have this put on the agenda to reduce the fee from 121 to maybe 10% increase of 52, or 20%, something more reasonable. Because if you look on the bottom of the handout, 2008, it was $10, 9 was $10, 2010 was 15, 11 was 15. 12, it was raised to 68, but they cut it in half to 34. 2013, it was 51. 14 was 52. 15, it was supposed to go to 241, but the Council had it reduced to $52, no raise. So I'd like this to be put on the agenda, or consider it, that it's raised in a fair amount, not 115% over last year and the year before. It just seems like it's too much, in my opinion. I don't know, I hope your opinion is similar. That's it. Thank you for your attention.
Which publication are you with?
Say again?
Which publication are you with?
LA Weekly, Pasadena Weekly, both. That's who I represent.
Ochoa? Of a fee study?
Yes, sir. The...
Of a fee study?
Yes, sir. The, um, the, uh, fully burdened cost, I believe, a couple of years ago, was determined to be two hundred and forty-two dollars. A gentleman came forward, council knocked that down to, and we held the, the fifty-two dollar number in this last budget. Um, rather than charge the fully burdened cost of two hundred and forty-two dollars, uh, it was basically pared in half to the hundred and twenty-one dollars. So you've, you've been doing, I think, precisely what the gentleman asks, although maybe up to the degree to which you would like. Uh, however, uh, we continue as we did in this last budget process, uh, urge you to continue, you know, increasing that amount, uh, to the fully burdened cost, um, especially considering the condition of many of the news racks, not necessarily his news racks, uh, but you heard in this afternoon's presentation from DGA, um, the oftentimes blighted conditions of these racks, because that industry is dying, um, and, and going in favor of a, of an electronic, uh, smartphone-driven, app-driven, um, uh, media, and so I think that is one of the unfortunate outcomes. If council would like to bring this matter back, we would, uh, urge you to do it as part of your mid-year budget in February, as opposed to just randomly, because if that's the case, I imagine any number of our residents could come forth and say, "Well, I want to change this other element of the fee structure that is driven by an actual fee study, um, that you consider as part of your, uh, annual budget adoption." So, um, I would only ask that if you are inclined to bring it back, bring it back in February.
Uh, next speaker is Marie Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, my name is Marie Freeman, and I'm a member of the Glen Oaks Canyon Homeowners Association. I've been a resident of Glendale for twenty-four years, eighteen of those in Glen Oaks Canyon, at the foot of Shoal Canyon landfill. I'd like to address the proposed landfill expansion project and the environmental impact report currently under consideration. I've had to ask myself many times, many questions about this landfill. One of them is why has the response to the proposed expansion not seemed to be more vocal, a little more fire to it, because it, it requires that it's a big deal. When we bought our house, realtors rarely mentioned the landfill, barely mentioned it, and then only as something that would very soon, by city contract, be closed. We had no idea that sitting in the middle of some of the most valuable, densely populated real estate in Los Angeles, near the L.A. River and major fault lines, would sit one of the largest urban landfills in the United States. It was too high to see at that time, and I'm getting this information from the EIR. We certainly never thought that the city would choose to expand it. In many respects, we still treat Shoal Canyon as though it were invisible, because we avoid dumps. By definition, they contain things we don't want to see, we don't want to smell, we don't want to taste or have any contact with. We want them hidden. We put them in plastic bags, and we dump them, and we hope they go away, and we pay others to mine them. We use euphemisms like landfill and tell ourselves it's not there. A community relations posting on the city of Glendale website suggests that, quote, "People fear what they don't understand," and that the EIR is a foundational document that grants time flexibility for the landfill to transition to a conversion facility. So I finally realized it was time to abandon denial that a huge urban dump sits in my backyard, and I read the ERI, an impressive tome, weighs a lot, but it's also very informative. Contrary to the city website post, however, the more I've learned, I've found that I'm beginning to fear what I do understand, not what I don't understand. The landfill is not static. It's an inherently risky environment. Ask any professional landfill person. It's a living, breathing, changing entity, which under traditional technology takes generations to decompose. It moves, shifts, size, it requires constant minding. Although the city of Glendale on its website proposes new technologies for the future, keep in mind the base of the current landfill is only as secure as the nineteen-fifties, nineteen-sixties technologies that established it, and the proposed expansions continue to sit on top of those older technologies, which very likely will not meet today's more stringent safety requirements. The EIR explains the risks of expanding, but it does not explain or evaluate the conversion alternatives alluded to by the city. They would be beautiful. Are they ever going to happen? Any decision to expand is fraught with risk, and I know you have and will continue to mine the voluminous report. Go beyond the cursory executive summary. It simply doesn't tell you enough. I have time to briefly address three issues. The EIR, first of all, air quality. The EIR does not include methane in air quality report. I found that surprising, although methane comprises forty-five to sixty percent of the greenhouse gases created by the landfill and is a threat to health and safety. Granted, Glendale is quite aware of methane. We harvest it. Like garbage, it's become a city enterprise. Will a larger landfill create even more methane? How will the current system accommodate it? How much will it cost to expand that system? And what are the inherent threats of methane, which is flammable, lighter than air, and does not always act according to expectations? Consider a rupture, a mini Porter Ranch episode, for which we in Glendale are responsible. It's our land. A second concern is the effects of seismic disruptions. The EIR report does map seven earthquake faults, which threaten the landfill. With a little additional research, I've found reports of the effects of the nineteen ninety-four, uh, North Ridge earthquake on surrounding, uh, landfills. These studies recommended great caution, great caution. Right, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do not have any other speaker cards. Close this portion of oral communications. Don't believe we have any other gen- we have new business?
New business.
We do. So let's hear the new business.
Okay. Uh, I would like, uh, to move, um, that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to initiate legal action in superior court. The name of the action, the defendants, and the nature of the action shall be disclosed to any person upon inquiry once the action has commenced. The city attorney is authorized to seek appropriate relief as authorized by the city council. The city attorney is further authorized to incur any and all expenses necessary in connection with said matter.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Barpedian?
Yes.
Nanyan?
Yes. Any other new business? No. Therefore, this evening, we will be adjourning in the memory of Randall States.
Just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Uh, be safe out there. We'll see you all next year.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
It's going to be on the record.